The motion is second. Are there any final questions or discussions? Not? Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Ally Schumaker.
Yeah.
Mitchell Tilk.
Yes. Next on the agenda is our citizens hearing. Allison, who's first?
Barbie Immer.
Barbie.
Do I have to tell you my address?
Your name and address.
Okay, Barbie Immer, two fourth South Washington in Hudson. And I'm here on Gap of the Quill. So every six months I can ask you for funding for the Quill. We also have businesses that offset that event. And the district foundation and council all look together to sum it up. I just reached out, talked to Ed Pyne. And he had an increase posted, goes up twice a year. And it hasn't been that for a while. We haven't had an increase since 2000 for what we pay. It was $800. And now it would go up to $912.50 for six months. So that's an increase of $112.50 every six months for the building portion of that. For our advertisements that we have that offset some of that cost, the amount that I would ask for this six months would be $669.50. And we have some sponsors, I like to read off our sponsors because they've been sticking with us for it. It's Aqua Dry, it's Perfect Clean, Heartland Inspection, Perfect Reader, Dollar's Pool Service, Country Squire, Daniel's Pest and Co., FW Gold and Plumbing, Hudson Green, Hudson Lion's Club, Hudson Woman's Club, Sunpower by Legacy. And they're based out of Wanda, Mid State Seamless Feathers in Long Island, Prairie Storage Sewing Studio in UCB Bay. And also the Poochin, Hudson Patrick and Village of Pots. So they all look together so that we can see how to get every resident and the village family.
Our current budget for next year, we do have money allocated to pay for that. And I think we'll plan to do that. Does anybody have any questions or comments, Barbie? Appreciate you coordinating advertising and helping keep the costs down for us.
I work with Denny and Lucy, she's off the, works with me for the Quill. Denise, our director, our librarian.
Right.
We work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbie. Allison, is there anyone else?
Yeah, Russ Waller.
Good evening, Russ Waller, 606 Star Beach Street here in Hudson. I noticed on tonight's agenda you have increasing sewer rates by 33%. And I understand why. Be familiar with the city ordinances and the fact that they're going to raise the rates for the next three years in a row, like 33% per year. And I presume that's the reason you're doing it. One of the things I also want to talk about is the lack of posting of minutes. So in order to get up to speed on this, I went to the Village website to look at minutes. None of them have been posted since December. And then tonight's video, I tried to watch on previous meeting, minutes. And it wasn't posted until tonight, like 50 minutes ago. So there's no way I could look at prior history to see what has been discussed on this. So one of my big concerns is, are we increasing the rates by more than what's necessary? And if we are, then what's the justification for that? So if we're doing it just to cover what the city's doing, understand that. Not happy about it, but support it because obviously you have to keep up the rates that they're going to charge you. But if we're posting that, we're going to increase more than what's necessary to keep up with that. I think a little more discussion, a little more notification, a little more involvement, communities necessary. Basically, when the city's done raising the rate for the next three years, people are going to pay twice what we're paying right now. And I imagine most people do not know that. So I think a little more notification, that's going to be necessary. Because, you know, right now, my wife and I, you know, being the empty nesters, only pay about 40 bucks a month. But $80 a month, probably going to affect a lot of people. There's a lot in this community, and I think a little more notification of that is appropriate. Just so that work can get out. You can find that with potential sewers that are going to install. The utility rates that we're going to pay in the Village of Hudson is going to increase dramatically. And I just think we need to be notifying the public a lot more than just that. Thank you.
Russ, you said it with sewer and water. You started off with sewer.
Well, I understand.
You said sewer.
Sorry, I meant water. I started off with sewer, I meant water. Sorry about that. But no, I understand the rate, the water rates. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think I said last meeting I wrote something up for the Quill and I didn't get around to it. So I will, I will try to do this one. Just quickly, I mean, we've kind of funded this year. And we're going with 33% increase. The next couple of years, we do have some leeway to maybe not increase it to the whole 33%. And that's where we need to have a discussion of how much money we do need to spend on things. And there's some unknowns of what we have to replace every day. We kind of funded this year and we're like, well, let's just go with 33% because we know it's going to keep going up. And we can decide next year if we need, if we should do less than that. I will kind of write all that up in the Quill because I know people, everybody I've asked doesn't know about it. So I will try to get something in the Quill explaining the whole thing.
And Sarah, what's our usual process for posting the Zoom?
Yeah, oh, the Zoom, usually it would just stream. But I wasn't here, so it was the first time I had to post it without typically. So I finally figured out how to do it, so that's why it got out there today. But minutes, Alison posts.
And we'll get the minutes out there after they're approved. We'll do a little bit with that, so. Okay. Allison, is there anybody else on the list?
No.
Okay, that's it. Then the citizens' portion number of our meeting is done. Next on our agenda is a report from me. First item is the sewer status, studying status. I have submitted all the initial big work that I can submit at this time to get the approval to receive the last $10,000 of our grant. I am waiting on responses from two of the state organizations. I've heard back from the Army Department of Parks and Forest. And I'm still waiting on two state organizations before I can do anything. That's where we're at right now. I will start working on a presentation for our senators and representatives to request funding and see where that goes. So I will be sending that to the trustees for review before we do anything. You know, and recap that's where we're at. Next on the agenda is the recommendation. I recommend the following members, the added to the planning commission. Claudia Gregory, Jeffrey Bates, Mark Beasley, and Patrick Lindley. And as I call your names, we all give a wave out to the board so we know who you are. That's Claudia, Mark, Jeff, Pat, there's Patrick, okay. And these are people from the community that different people, board members or citizens have talked to. And they have volunteered to be on the planning committee. They attended the initial meeting last week to learn about it. And I also recommend that we renew Alan Apple's term on the zoning board of appeals. He needs to be reappointed and re sworn back in too. So I look for a motion, those are my recommendations. I'm looking for a motion to appoint those four people to the planning commission. We'll do that first.
I'll make a motion to appoint Claudia, Jeff, Patrick, and Mark to the planning commission. Do you want a secondary motion for the ZDA?
Yeah, I'll make that a separate motion.
Effective today.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have any final questions or discussions?
The only thing I'll say on the table is, and I apologize, I didn't send you my minutes from last, from last week, but you'll get that tonight. We had a great meeting the other day. I feel confident that the individuals who volunteered and stepped up for the community are going to do a great job. Each one of them asked very detailed questions about a variety of different topics. And I think they're going to approach it in a unique, new, and insightful way. So I'm excited to see what they do. And I think each one of them will bring out a different viewpoint to that board, so thank you.
That's great. So we have a motion and a second to appoint these four citizens to the planning commission. Are there any final questions? Not, we'll do a roll call, roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Votes. All right, before we swear the man, I'd also like to see if we can get Alan, a motion to appoint Alan to the zoning board.
I'll make the motion to appoint Alan to the zoning board of appeals, effective today.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any final questions or discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Votes. Motion carries. I want to thank the five of you for the great job you will be doing. And Alan for the job he's done in the past on both the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. And I'd like to have Allison go ahead and swear you all in at this time.
So I'll do the four of you for planning commission first. Hi, please say your name.
I'm Mark Beasley.
We solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of planning commission member.
The duties of planning commission member.
That's my bill.
That's my billing.
The hour of glory. I will say your name.
Alan Apple.
We solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of zoning board of appeals member.
The duties of zoning board of appeals member.
And that's my bill.
My thanks to all five of you for all the effort you do to this. Thank you very much, look forward to working with you. So next item on my agenda is the siren upgrade status. We are working to get our storm sirens upgraded so that the village or the county has the ability to set it off in case the village personnel are not available to do it. And Mark, you want to kind of recap where we're at with that?
Right, so with changing over to the new system, it requires a different receiver and transmitter so that the county can also set it off. So it required the purchase of some new equipment that needs to be installed. It's in the process of that now. The vendor that EMA uses, McLean County EMA uses, is going through that process right now. And it's also tied in somewhat with another village in McLean County, which is at Lexington. They also want to go to the same system. So to do that, they put in all the equipment that we need on our end. And then that big piece of equipment from McLean County EMA gets taken up to Wisconsin where they can reprogram. There's a company that reprograms and does all that. Once that's done, then we'll be able to set off the sirens and the county set off the sirens. Because currently only we can set them off. And there's three radios that can set them off. One here at the police department, one at the fire department, one that I carry with me as the coordinate. So anywhere that I'm in the county, I can set it off, the radio will work. So currently, we're doing, we're in the process of that. Hopefully, they'll have it done fairly soon. Because I think it's just going to be a great advantage that the county can also do it. They have much better facilities there. I mean, I watch the radar and we have an app now. But theirs is a little bit more highly advanced, what they can see. So if I don't see it on my screen, that it looks like we have imminent severe weather that we need to set them off, they'll see it and they'll either contact me or if they can't get ahold of me for some reason, then they'll be able to set it off.
Any questions on the siren upgrade? As a side note, some of the sirens at the Clinton Power Station are being decommissioned. And the person that's upgrading our sirens will be decommissioning theirs. And we were asked if we'd be interested in getting one of the decommissioned sirens. Since we have one that is three phase and we'd like to replace it with a two phase, I asked to put it on the list to get one of the excess sirens. So we may have a siren coming from that. I do not know whether it's two phase or three phase yet, but we are at least on the list, so we'll get more information. All right, next, I'd like to talk about the ordinance we have for the EMA Coordinator. The existing ordinance we have says the EMA Coordinator is to be the fire chief. And our fire chief has declined that position. So Mark is going to be our EMA Coordinator. And we need to change the ordinance. And the only wording and the ordinance to change is that the EMA Coordinator shall be appointed by the village president with the advice of the senate of the village board of trustees. It takes out the fire chief part of it. It takes out the township's involvement in the approval process. This is the way the state laws is intended to be. So the ordinance number would be 1378. And I'm looking for one of the trustees to make a motion to approve ordinance 1378 to change the EMA Coordinator appointment process.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1378, change the EMA Coordinator approval process.
Do we have a second?
I'll submit.
Do we have any final questions or discussions? Not, this will be a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Oh, real quick, I'm sorry. You have to update to the, your copy of the ordinance with her name instead there. I just didn't get another one, it's all on the trip. I just caught that.
Yes, it's got Natalie on it.
I just want to know if that's updated.
Okay. Allison, get that correct.
And Dave, Dave, if you could roll call this since it's an ordinance.
Okay, we do have the roll call there. Okay, thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
All right, so let's do a vote, all in favor, it's ordinance 1378, to change the EMA Coordinator. Allison, please do a roll call vote.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Ally Schumaker.
Yeah.
Mitchell Tilk.
Yes. Okay, the motion carries. Pat, thanks for getting us that upgrade and getting the correct wording on that. The next item I'm going to pin, we did not get a estimate on what the siren ordinance will, sirens will, I'm sorry, the sirens, sirens bill will cost. So I have nothing to present there, so there will not be anything on that bullet point. Next is the EV charging stations. The county has notified me that they need the location of where we want the EV charging stations. And I have to get that to them by Friday. So I know we've discussed, discussed several possibilities. And I believe the last preferred choice was in the township parking lot across from Childers. If I remember, there were concerns about putting it at the ballpark. We didn't want to tie up parking spaces. I did not get definite definitive answers from the county and the state as far as the questions we had at our last meeting. But the county was pretty sure that the parking spaces should be reserved for charging only. So I have word out to the township requesting they review it. I approve it, but I need the board's okay tonight to go ahead and, some kind of consensus or vote that that's where we want to put them. If not, you know, let's suggest other locations if we have better spots. Any thoughts from any of the trustees?
I guess if the township is okay with it there, then it'd be fine with me. I don't want to take them out of the ballpark. I don't, because that's fast. Especially if you can't park them.
Any other thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I think in fact that would be the Casey old parking lot, but that would have to go through.
All right, it's go through the Casey. And I think they're looking for spots where there's longer term parking. You know, I think some of the Casey's employees would be here all day during the time of the crisis. Whereas the township lot, people that have business at the town hall for meetings, township hall, it would be in and out, so they might be able to take advantage of it and stuff. Do we have a consensus that that's where we want to go if the township will agree to it? Okay, so I'll follow up with the township to make sure we agree with them. All right, so.
Dave, quickly back to the sirens, is that, did we find out that's going to be offset money, with buying sirens? Or?
Lynn was going to follow up with that, I don't know, there's sheard care.
Okay, this one.
So we think the tip money can probably, at least some of it, we don't know how much, so. And we don't have a bill yet, so we'll come out next year, but. So next on the agenda for tonight is the water building property streets and zoning game.
2.3 million gallons per month, 77,000 for today. And I think, Sarah, we were around 10 or 11 or something.
10% loss.
Which is about the same as the month before. And we went around and tested several tiles, Mike and I, to see if we, you know, like we had found several before. And the no avail finding chlorine, so we're still keeping our eye out. But we're not, we're not at a terrible rate at this point. The Turner Park playground equipment, there was one piece in particular that was kind of had some safety, jagged edges, concerns. And we fixed that, reinforced it, and it's over at Mackinac Valley. It's power loaded right now and should be back in a week or so. So that'll be back in a lot better, safe working condition. The bathrooms are open at the concession stand. So that's good to go for if we can have some good weather to be able to use that facility. The next month, I'm probably not going to work on very much drainage with this, with the rain and the ground being soft. It wasn't going so well when we tried it earlier. And some of the playground equipment that we got late last fall and this winter, we'll probably, we'll be working on that. I'd like to say congratulations to the sewing studio. All the remodeling was updated, passed all the building inspections, looks great in there. I sent out an invite to all you guys, credit's not high. I went over there to try to stop by on Friday and sort of bargain at the ballpark. It was standing room only over there, so congratulations to them. Place looks, you know, really, really nice. Then this was a kind of an oversight, I think, on my part is, and I'm not sure, Kathy was always doing this. And I kind of noticed this today and questioned Mitch about sending the ordinances that need to be done with the codifiers into the code. I noticed there had been a couple of spots that we had passed things that weren't in there. So Kathy was always doing that, of course Kathy's not here. And I had never told Mitch about, oh, by the way, we need to figure out how to do that. So I don't know how we do that, other than to call Kathy and see what that process was. So that hasn't been done since Kathy as well, so. I don't know, Allison, do you have any idea how to do that? All right, all right, I'll send Kathy, I'll get ahold of her and see what that process is so we can get that done. And then along with myself, Mark Meyer, and Mike, we went with Mark and Chris to the weather spotting class down there at the county. And I thought that was what worked our effort to do that, that's all I had.
Any, do we have any questions for Danny? If not, next is our report from our village marshal, Mark Cready.
Well, as you can see, as usual on the report, you have some hard numbers at the top. Let me see what those numbers, do you have any questions about those numbers? Do you want, no? Danny already mentioned he did go to the EMA weather spotting class. And I want to thank the village staff for assisting with this and giving weather spotters. I think it's going to be a great, great addition. They're out there in about, you know, during the week, so it really does help that those extra eyes out there. In terms of meetings I attended, just one report, one criminal report this month. It was an attempted residential burglary report. Officer Jamie Lacy has transitioned, so she's on her own and doing well. I get some positive comments from the public that she interacts well. She can downwind bar checks at Sitten Bowl and Country Squire. And we have positive things to say about her, so that's good. On April 16th and 17th, we represented us from Axon, the vendor that we bought, our body cams and our squad car, new squad car video system. These are two months ago. It'll take a full two days to cycle through the three cars to get them off and going. And once that's done, then we'll, then we can go ahead and be live with the body cam and the system. Lastly, St. Jude's fundraiser is this Saturday at Sitten Bowl. I will be working this Saturday because it's a big event, there's a lot of people, a lot of money. So both Chris and I will be working that Saturday. Not necessarily at the event all the time, but we'll be in the area and I'll be around. And I will give it some personal attention while Chris is out on the patrol. The other thing is, you see your streetlight report. They won less than last month, so we're moving in the right direction. We still have those six locations that we'll have to deal with. And again, Cameron will send you appropriately the most.
Mark, the tip for the fundraiser, that's going to go out Thursday, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll be there with them Thursday to make sure that it's in the right spot, that it's not going to be a problem.
Somebody have any questions for Chief Cuddy? Okay, if not, thank you, forget it. Next, we have a report from our thing base. So first we have finance budget, contracts, employees.
First one is to discuss and vote on the intergovernmental agreement for the fire station for their, um, we talked about, you can get funds, it's all drawn up with the current estimate. So it's about 218,39,400 dollars. And it's a reimbursement, so once they've worked on it, have the bill and we reimburse them for it. So are there any additional questions about it or concerns? Okay, then I make a motion, we approve the ordinance number 1379 for approving and operating the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the village Hudson and Hudson Community Fire Department.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Motion is second, any final questions or discussions? If not, Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Ally Schumaker.
Yeah.
Mitchell Tilk.
Yes. All right, motion carries.
Next, I have the resolution to move funds to cover IT costs. We discussed this. This is the actual, you have a study that I've moved those funds in the budget. So are there any additional questions?
The only question I have for you is, did we end up coming to an agreement on the connection between buildings and going to fiber? Is that part of this cost?
That's not part of it. That's all in the budget.
That would be in the budget and it would be covered with tip if we decided to do it.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was announced.
So this is not for that, any of the wiring stuff.
Yeah, okay, so then I make a motion to approve resolution numbers 1284.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, second, to approve resolution. We have a motion, second to approve resolution twenty dash fourteen, which is to transfer excess funds from the budget. Current year's budget to cover the IT expenses for GNS for helping organize our, our systems, getting a handle on it. So are there any final questions or discussions? Not Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Natalie Schumaker. Mitchell Tilke.
I'm seeing.
Um, I have another question, because I have to be able to discuss about on the MediaCom contract, so hope they are. Final, do I need the clean and final copy to be able to vote on it, or do you wait until that's done? Do you still have a red line copy?
So I made the red line, so I can click that and make it a final. MediaCom was somewhat insistent, they wanted their people to prepare the final, but. Um, they, that last email from their lady indicated that, that we seem to be good on terms. Um, so you could vote to approve it tonight, since we do know what the final version is. And if it happens to be that MediaCom comes back with something that surprises us, we could bring it back next month to approve amendment.
Okay, so this is the MediaCom contract that we're working on for the building that they leased, so the ten year lease. Um, two thousand dollar a year rent with a five percent increase each year. They agreed to all those terms. Um, so we have the final red line copy there. Um, making the final clean copy, um, they'll let them vote on it, so is there any questions on this one? No, and then I make a motion to approve the contract, um, to the village and MediaCom for the lease of the.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
So we have a motion, a second to approve the contract for MediaCom with the revenues for the village to be two thousand dollars a year. Change the contract with a five percent annual increase.
Is that five percent?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what we have discussed that we wanted to put in, so are any final questions or discussions? If not, Allison, vote, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly, you know, Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Natalie Schumaker.
Yeah.
Mitchell Tilke.
Yes.
Okay, final one, uh, the budget, um, we have the budget, okay, um. We need to wait until we talk about ways to actually approve it, or do we, we need to do this after?
No, we can approve the budget now, and it has enough to cover.
Okay.
What our ratings might be.
Okay, so what we need to do is decide if we want to approve it with. The, uh, funds for potential good, like, or without.
Yeah, you can.
For the, uh, send us like a full time employee or without. Um, so everybody should have seen the, um, balance sheet with both. Um, I'm in favor of approving it with, just because it's in there, and if we want to do it, then it's already done and approved. But I would, um, entertain discussion on it if anybody has any other ideas.
So if we approve with, then we can always, if we don't.
Yeah.
If we got that amount of money approved, right? Okay, yeah.
We're not committed to our.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. Only thing I would say is that you agreed, so we brought it up before, that. If, if that position was brought on, then it should be continued on obtaining water licenses that is in the privilege. Um, that's my own statement, I think it's probably makes sense to keep it in the budget and to move forward in case we did this year. Um, I would just advocate for maybe taking a cautious approach to say, can we? Can you obtain the necessary qual, you know, qualifications to, because that's a, a position that will be what we need for a long term spot. So thank you.
Dave, are we going into closed session on that? On salaries and.
The closed session is the performance reviews and salary reviews. It is not.
I don't agree with what you're talking about.
It is noting.
Call that as a closed session?
We're not doing it. It's not, we're not ready, I don't think we're ready to talk about that anymore, yeah?
Because I, I would like to expand what Mitch was saying as far, uh, having, having something drawn up, uh, which explains what our, our expectations are.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was trying to tell everyone, just to hear again.
Yeah.
We have to be.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tonight, we're just doing the budget and salary and performance reviews. So we will discuss that later. Is there any other discussions or questions on the budget? To be noted for the general audience that either way, uh, our budget will be in black, but no carryover from last year from, from this current budget year.
Then I make a motion to approve, uh, the silly year twenty twenty five budget with the, uh. Second full time employee.
I'll say it back. Is we have a motion and a second to approve the twenty four, twenty five budget with the second full time employee. Are there any final discussions or questions? Not Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Natalie Schumaker.
Yeah.
Mitchell Tilke.
Yes. All right, motion carries. We've been a lot tonight, thank you.
We have discussed all that.
Yeah, I know.
Yes. Do you have any else?
I did it.
Okay, and we'll move on to streets, Phil.
Uh, I have, uh, no business this evening, uh. I talked with Danny a little bit, and he explained what he's gonna be doing, uh, and upcoming, or in the rest of the night, working on other stuff other than drainage. So, uh. Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay. Next is ordinance and zoning trustee.
Yes, um, it's not on the, uh, agenda, um, but I do have one item that I want to address the board as well as the committee, but. Um, I prepared a written statement about it, um, I think it would be a little bit better this way, but. Um, so I've been the trustee for zoning in the Woodmanstown for maybe six months coming today. Um, when I originally accepted the position, I advised Mayor Brublack, as well as the citizens of this community, that I would give my all to this position. And allocate many hours necessary for the position to serve the community. I had every intention to remain in this position for a long time, help shape, uh, the Hudson of the future. However, there have been recent changes with my full time employment that will require significant training, dedication, uh, to technology deployments and to the. Uh, employees that I lead at my full time employer, um, as well as family obligations with our son-to-be, uh, soon joining us here in the end of April. And my wife needs some support at home. So, uh, with that being said, I no longer can apply to the citizens as well as to the mayor originally. Uh, and the hardest thing for me to do is to do that. Um, because of this, I no longer feel it's fair to the citizens of Hudson, that a trustee is not fully committed to what the role demands of him. And I'm providing notice of my resignations for this position effective April third, uh, twenty twenty four, so tomorrow. I'm hopeful that my decision, I originally told mayor, uh, a month ago, um, to push this out to the third would allow active time for him to find a replacement for me before the next. Uh, but the, the next board meeting, uh, as well as, um, carry through for the budgetary obligations to make sure that the village ran smoothly through this. Uh, this, this time, so I'm hopeful that, um. That the board will continue to, to do great things, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us for the board. Uh, and I, I know each one of you are, are gonna do, uh, good work, so it's been an honor to serve, uh, with you guys, uh, and I wish you guys the rest, um. I wish you, uh, and the rest of the board trustees, uh, nothing but the best in your future endeavors. Uh, in the future, should my circumstances change and I can dedicate the time to serve again, I will ensure to put a new half for the better, better than the village. So thank you, uh, each one of you guys, as well as the, the citizens for entrusting me for the last six months, I, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch, I want to thank you too, you brought some good perspective to a lot of our discussions, and you got a great job for it, so thank you. All right, next is, uh, grease department trustee Kevin.
Um, the only thing that I have is going to be over there, um, evaluations for personnel.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Uh, next is water, Joe.
Oh, yeah, the one thing I have is, is the water re-increase, we already talked about a little bit, um, we talked about this quite a bit over the last few months, and. I believe at the last budget meeting, what we said was we go ahead and just, just do the thirty three percent increase this year. And, you know, there's thirty three percent increase that's coming in the next two years, to be decided, we pass on that full thirty three percent shift to the. To the village residents at that time, we do think we need to, uh, you know, come up with a good explanation of where that money would be spent, to Russ's point. You know, do we need, do we need the increases that this, this caused us? Um, and we, there's a lot of things to understand, uh, you know, what, what piping in the village we do need to replace and, and what scheduling devices and stuff. So there's lots to understand before we do next two increases, but this particular increase would, would, uh, go up thirty three percent from what we started now. Does anyone have questions? I just double checked my numbers before the speaking, you know, I panicked, maybe I did the math wrong, but it looks, looks correct. Uh, the new, the new rate is, is one point one five ninety three four hundred gallons, so. For the first thousand gallon.
And, and so everyone's aware of this, that coincides with when Bloomington said they would start increasing our rates.
Yeah, so that's, that's the one thing I don't understand, and I, so I, I had this as a vote to approve this ordinance change this month. And I would just tell Sarah, just start charging if one of her needs to, and I think, I think, I think Bloomington should have changed what they're billing us on May first.
Okay.
So however that works out, this is April, and we're gonna approve this.
We bill a month at a time. Um.
So, so when you bill in sixteen, you're paying for the month previous, right?
Yeah, so like the May first bill will be for. March seventeenth to April seventeenth, so I, with June first bill is when we actually.
Oh, so it, it, and, but the billing period is the middle of the month, the middle of the month, okay.
Mm hmm.
I don't know how you figure that out, but.
I think, I guess my suggestion would be, after talking to Carol, is. Half a month, we pay the extra thirty three percent, otherwise I don't know how you would figure that and put that on each bill annually. I think the village just takes the half a month, it, with the extra, and we start it with that June first bill, so it's not a.
Oh, or does it?
It's gonna be a lot. It'll be a lot. So I think we would start at the first month, and it could be one hundred percent at that, so that would be actually, yeah.
The May sixteenth bill.
May seventeenth to June seventeenth will be our July one bill, so July one bill will be when that will actually come into play. Mm hmm.
So I, I don't know, I don't know if Pat wants to yell at us or anything. Or we don't do it right away, or if you dispose of here, or do you have suggestions or?
Well, the one thing I'm wondering is, um, so I, it's on as approving and did someone prepare an ordinance? I didn't prepare an ordinance to make the change, so is there a physical ordinance ready?
Uh, yeah, so, so the one, the one you did for us a couple of months back, I just took it, changed the numbers.
That, that's great, save you guys money, that's fine, um, so whatever, whenever you want that rate to be effective, you just need to address it in the effective date of the ordinance. So there's a section at the end that says this ordinance shall take effect and immediately upon its passage or ten days after its passage. Um, so you can manipulate that section to define when it becomes effective, um, you know, whether you do it. It, yeah, you, you don't want to change midstream on a billing month, so whatever you guys think's prudent in terms of being it in front or behind the change from, from Bloomington.
Yeah, I think this says ten days after, so we should actually.
I can get to the date that we would need it to technically start.
And if we were on it next month?
We could, yeah, it's not gonna be in effect before next month.
Okay, so I.
So it's not a problem.
We shouldn't approve this this month if the ordinance doesn't have the right stuff, huh? Can't find it right somewhere in here, oh, there it is, section three, this ordinance will take effect ten days after passing the approval.
Oh, you, I mean, you could just drag through that tonight and say this ordinance shall be effective on blank. And then just clean up the, did, you know, clean up the official copy with the typewritten version, but I'm. I, you know, that happens sometimes, you have to mark it up on the spot, so.
Okay, so change back to whatever date.
It'll be May seventeen of twenty twenty four is, would be the first date we would start at that rate.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve ordinance, the change the water rates at the same time that Bloomington starts filling us thirty three percent more, we take thirty three percent more.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to increase the water rates, uh, the thirty three percent when Bloomington starts increasing our rates thirty three percent. How is that gonna be worded?
In, in the, in the, in the ordinance here?
Yeah.
Instead of saying?
It says we have ten days after passing, no?
Yeah, in section three, we're just gonna put a date, so this ordinance shall take effect on May seventeen twenty twenty four.
Okay.
Instead of ten days after passing, we put a whole other publication.
Okay, and good. Is there any final questions or discussions?
I want to say, Joe, we need to get going, I want to do that, it seems like it's pretty reasonable to hear that way, and I know that you talked before, we were very proud about. Like the infrastructure, I'm getting used to water rates and, and you're getting a schedule of that, and I think what you're playing of. Increasing it incrementally until we get the plan of the infrastructure, how it maps in across, how much debt is gonna cover, et cetera. You're getting for a, you're right, and then you know, looking at it.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions or comments? Now, we have a motion and a second to increase water rates, uh, Allison, roll call, vote.
Uh, who was the second for that one? Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Natalie Schumaker.
Yeah.
Mitchell Tilke.
Yes.
And I will, I promise, I'll write it up this month, and I'll send it to all of you to make sure the breach is not crazy, and we'll get it quill. So everybody can understand what's going on, what our options are the next couple of years, if they want to get involved and discuss. How much their water rate should increase the next year, if they understand what we're doing now, um, with the water rates. We, we do bill more, you know, Hudson residents than Bloomington bills us, so we can maintain our infrastructure, so I will try to clearly explain all that, and I'll make sure I'm ready to do it first.
Isn't that also, we posted on the village Facebook page of some sort too, I feel like I look quill, but I'm not necessarily meaning all of ours.
Oh, I know, I have six plus words for it.
Um, but most people, we think.
Yeah, we should, we should.
It'll put in what we, what we tell, um, this.
Hey, you're right, is it worth explaining that? The costs that they're charging us, that additional funds doesn't come to the village. Um, that's going to maintain Bloomington infrastructure that they're charging us the additional for. And so anything that we were to charge is to maintain our infrastructure as well, so I think there's a. A point of clarity there that probably needs to be made, that in the future, should a decision be used to increase above. X rate, that it's, it's because we do have some serious needs in the village that we need to, to maintain. Um, I just think that'd be an influence back to the footprint, wherever, wherever you're gonna put it, so.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, like, you have a bunch of people reading, like, you want to do it concisely, so people will actually read, you know, things, and get it all in there, so I would, I would do my best, if you guys could give me questions.
It's hard to explain that our shared infrastructure starts at Lake Bloomington, goes through the treatment plan. All the way to Bloomington and then back to Hudson before it comes to us, so. That's also part of our, our cost is the treatment at the, our facility, so. All right, Joey, have you got anything else? Okay, uh, next is public property, Natalie.
Um, I don't have any people doing this, but I just want to share that I've met with Danny a couple of times. There's all the updates happening to each one of the three, three parks, new equipment going in, uh, and replacements and all of that, so. And then with our new budget for the next year, we want some money built in to work on Friendship Park, that hasn't been updated in a while, so. I'm excited to see all the new stuff here coming, so we're getting out here pretty soon, in the next couple of weeks, uh, and it's something that I do for the, it'll be.
Okay, do you want to have any questions for Natalie?
There's a lot of people using the parks, I know that.
Yeah.
But, as you know, I moved my home to town, and if they're in that house and watch it, there's just, there's some people on the front of the park these days.
I, I do want to make a comment, just to thank you for the review for replacing the Friendship Park, um, flat pan. Uh, my daughter's a free printer at that park, and, uh, two and a half girls with all that sharp edges, it's not a great thing, so. My daughter is a free printer of that park and two and a half year old with all that sharp edge, it's a great thing, so thank you all for, uh, for making those improvements.
Yeah, and just to add to that, one other thing that I could kind of focus on, I talked with Danny about is the presence of Olivia in our hearts. Uh, a lot of them are built for older kids, even like if it's a baseball field, anybody under the age of five, it's totally like playing there. Character purchase steps up a little bit easier, but just making sure that we, um, are assessing all our cards that they should have, that are appropriate for everybody to be with them.
Okay, okay, thank you, Natalie. Uh, next on the agenda is local commissioner report, we have nothing to report tonight. So our next item is to move into closed session to discuss.
I'm, I'm wrapped with my big list of things tonight, but I want to thank Sarah for, for all of her work on the budget. She makes the process super easy, at least it has been, um, and also enjoyable.
That might be your candy and cookies.
Yeah, you're, you're so good at keeping everything in mind and kind of knowing, uh, what's going on in all that departments. So there you go.
So like, Sarah, what did our total revenue shift this year? Not twice.
Full revenues are at six hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Yeah, no.
So the budget, once we pass it, file it with the county, the budget is available to anybody who wants to really read something and go to sleep at.
I read expenses, you're right, I read expenses. I did a little bit of that. Seven hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy, I read it online, you're right. Good job, up until tonight, yeah. You can take my thank you back.
Our numbers got inflated over the last couple of years with the two hundred thousand dollar ECO grant and sixty thousand dollar county grant. So we're back to normal revenues for most of it, so. Okay, uh, I have nothing to report as local commissioner, so I will be entertaining a motion to move into closed session to discuss employee performance and salary reviews. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second, I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, we will move to closed session and I'm going to recommend that our trustees tonight move into the conference room. Go ahead and move.
Do you need Pat for closed session at all? Do you need Pat at all for closed session? Perfect. All right, see you, Pat.